I'd like to welcome everybody out to this June 12th, 2014 Sholo School Board Meeting. And welcome all those that are here and all those that are watching on television. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we have asked Mr. Larson to lead us in invocation and Ms. Diana to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our Father, we're grateful to be here this evening. We're grateful for the folks who have chosen to be with us here. And we're grateful especially for the young people who have come to visit with us. And we would ask that Thy Spirit would be with us, that we'd be able to make decisions that are wise and that will be a benefit for this school district, for the children, the parents, the administration. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve in these positions and ask for Thy guidance and say so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain an approval of the adjournment.
I'll still move.
Second?
I have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 1.2, Mr. Brackney will report on the activities taking place throughout the district. Mr. Brackney.
You know, just a couple of things. There's a lot going on, as you know. As a reminder, in the summertime, we usually pick up four extra part-time grounds and/or maintenance guys to kind of help with painting, landscaping, and that sort of stuff. And yet still, even with that, the grass seems to grow very fast. And so, but we're on top of it. The principals have done an excellent job in trying to get ready for next year. And that's what we spent most of our summer doing at this point in time is getting ready for the beginning of school. We're gonna blink and school's going to be in one, once again. We do have summer school going on throughout the district at the various buildings. And it's just been a wonderful, successful event. And other than that, the remodeling and some of the other additions are taking place. And it looks like we'll be able to start school off on a good positive note this next year.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, it's time for call the audience. And I have five, I think I counted right, people that like to address the board. Just a reminder, that as you come forward, state your name so that we can mark down who you are. And then remember that we try to limit our conversations to three to five minutes and move forward. I also always try to remind people that in the call of the audience, if it is not a board action item, there's many times when we can't make a decision. We can only listen at that point. And so with that, I have, three of them were numbered and I got two extras, so I just slid them in. Are y'all okay with that? Okay. So then I will start with Mr. Thaddeus Carline.
My name is Thaddeus Carline. I'm a Cougar. I play youth football for the Cougars in second grade. I love playing football for the Cougars. I want to continue playing Cougar football next year for the seventh grade team. My teammates and I aren't just friends, we're like family. We have gotten to know each other really well over the last five years. We will always be there for each other. My dad asked me why I want to play football so much. I told him it's football, Cougar football. And I have played, I've played nearly half my life. If I can't play, I feel like I've let my teammates down. My coaches have instilled in me hard work and chasing my dreams. One of my dreams is to play Cougar football.
Thank you. The next one is Mr. Zachary Maxwell.
My name is Zachary Maxwell. I've been playing with Thaddeus and Keon since second grade for past four years. Every, Thaddeus is a great tackle for us and a great defensive line. He was great on the line. Keon had great speed, great agility, and great skilled player. I really wish to play with him through seventh, eighth, all the way till college. I, with the guard on tackle on my side when in second grade when I was the center, every time they would, we would be great on that side. And set, and that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. The next person, Ms. Anna Intencio.
Good evening. I am Anna Intencio. Thaddeus is my son. My son is very shy and he's been very stressed all day to come speak to you. I noticed a little nervousness in his voice. And actually, for a person who deals with people, I'm actually a little nervous speaking to you as well. Thaddeus came here tonight because this is how much he wants to play. He wants this because he loves football. I myself look at this as a equality issue. By statute, you're required to allow homeschoolers to be involved in extracurricular activities in the school. You have the discretion whether or not to allow students that attend private school to be involved in extracurricular activities. Blue Ridge allows students that reside within the district that attend private schools to be involved in extracurricular activities. They recognize that the families that live within the Blue Ridge School District pay taxes. We pay taxes too. Our taxes go to support the Sholo School District. We support the Sholo School District. We have been actively involved, the Sholo School District, to the extent that we have without having our schools there or our kids there. My husband, this last school override, was actively involved in the last school override. In years past, I've been involved with the teen court. Every time that my husband or I have been asked to come speak to the school, we have come to speak to the school. Every time that we've had some student come solicit to sell something to earn money for the school, we have bought their goods. And that's been a lot. We support the Sholo School District. We want the Sholo School District to be good. Eventually, our boys will be coming here. We have chosen to send our boys to a private school to meet their needs. We also appreciate that our boys have had the opportunity at the schools that they attend now to exercise their religious freedom by embracing their beliefs at their current school. All the students that choose to exercise their religious beliefs in school, whether or not they attend St. Anthony's or Mountain Christian, should not be discriminated against and denied the opportunity to play extracurricular sports. We should be afforded the same opportunities as the students that are homeschooled. The private schools do not receive state funds. We pay their tuition and we pay taxes to support the Sholo School District. We will pay the fees associated with football. We're hoping that, I guess previously there was a recommendation to make a fee of $6,000 if the board did approve it. We ask that you not do that. These boys would like to play football. We will get our boys to and from school. We will be active and supportive parents. We are asking that the boys, Keon, Cantor, Thaddeus, Carline, any student that goes to a private school that resides within this district, not just our boys, anybody that lives within the district that goes to a private school, be afforded the same opportunities as the students that go to homeschool. Let them try out. If they let, if they make the team, let them play. Give them this opportunity. Please reconsider your denial to allow them to play football. Thank you.
Okay. I have a packet for each of you guys. I don't know if I'm doing this right.
Doing fine.
Here's a packet for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They told me that if I needed two extra, I would have...
Is this homework? Is there a test on this tomorrow?
Absolutely not. It is good reading. You should get it on your candles. You tonight, I'm sorry you don't have. I'm sorry. I have a packet for you. Okay. My name is Felicity Cantor. I have five kids. I have two kids in public school, one that graduated from Sholo High School, and one that is currently going to be a freshman at Sholo High School. I have three more kids that are out here in the audience that go to private school. Why I split them up is because the middle child, Keon Cantor, could not function in a class of 30. He just could not. I had to think of a way to confine him, to make him learn, to make him love school, to make him want to love education. So we found St. Anthony's, which is a class size of 12. So it has worked for our family. Has it been a pain for me to drive back and forth? Yes. But do I support Sholo School District? Yes. So, I'm standing up here for my son, Keon Cantor, asking you to reconsider your position as to your denying of private funding school to participate in Sholo Junior High Football Program. About six months ago, Keon started bugging me to contact someone, anyone, to give him permission to play for Sholo Junior High. The school my son currently attends, which is St. Anthony's, does not offer football for seventh and eighth grade. So I'm gonna be honest, I kind of ignored him. I ignored him, thinking he'll forget and maybe he'll want to do club soccer, club baseball, club anything, just so I wouldn't have to come here and stand up and be that huge support that our kids deserve. There's so much out there these days and someone is always putting something together for our youth, which is all those clubs. So when my son came to me one day and said, "I talked to a lady who might be able to help me be a part of the team." Right then, my heart dropped. And I thought to myself, "This boy is passionate about this, about this." And when I got on the ball and started asking coaches, which is Todd Lee, the head coach, which is Monte Maxwell, who has coached him since first grade, which is Kao Kai, which is now his coach right now, and has coached my other, my baby son in Mighty Mites, which is Garrison Fawcett and which is Dave Fawcett. I asked them all to write letters in regards to them supporting my son and Thaddeus Carline, or for that fact, the private schools, which I know can be a hard thought because, oh my gosh, what does that open it up to? Of course we think of that. Of course you think, "Why should we do that?" But you don't know that positive effect that will trumpet through this community of maybe even making me think twice that maybe I do believe in Sholo School District to provide for my son, Keon Cantor, the middle child, that he maybe will be able to be in a class of 30 and focus. So, um, let's see. So they all agreed to write a letter stating their thoughts about the participation of these boys. "I thank these people with all my heart for writing and stating why in their heart they think this will cause no harm or no damage to the junior high team. There are no cuts and no promises that my boy or any other boy will be first string. But what matters is the examples we have showed these kids as adults and as leaders." We are a community. We are friends. We see past all the negativity. And they look to the adults as leaders. We are a community that comes together. We come together in all the sports, whether it's Little League that we pay for, that's not part of the school district. We come together at the Youth Football League. I see many people there right here at those games. We come together and we show our kids that we can become one. So eventually, all these boys will be in high school together. And I believe that Keon's team, his year, will be state champions. I believe that, not because I know football, not because I know all of the positions, but I know what Todd Lee has taught them to work together and the tenderness that he has taught him, has taught the team that they will be championships. And if you could please reconsider your position of denying it, I would greatly appreciate it. Because you will only benefit from it. I promise you, you will only benefit from it, from my point of view. I thank you for giving me this time to speak to you and I hope to get to know each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brad Carline.
Actually, the name I'm known by, but most of the people in the audience, is Thaddeus' his dad. And that's actually a name that I wear very proudly because of who my son is. I wish I would have known that at your April meeting, you were going to discuss this issue because then we could have engaged in more of a dialogue. And I understand the open meeting laws because it's not on the agenda. It's just a one-way conversation from us to you. But thank you for the time to allow us to do this. Thaddeus has been playing Cougar football, as he says, in second grade. He's played with the same players, had the same coaches during that whole time. They have developed a special bond that those of you that have played team sports knows that you only develop on the athletic field. And you can see it by the turnout of his teammates, what they feel for him and what they feel for Keon and the rest of the members on their team. It's been wonderful to see Thaddeus' development not only as a football player, but as a young man through the guidance of his coaches these past five years. Thaddeus is barely 12, the youngest on his team, but he's always been the biggest, though Zach has been giving him a run for the money lately. He's been a head taller. When he first started playing football in the second grade, he earned the nickname Tank because the coaches just said, "Go hit the kid across from you." He'd run him over, just like a tank. And over the seasons, the coaches have worked with him. He's developed techniques on how to properly block, how to shed a block, how to tackle. And with that work, with his desire and love of football and his, just this inner passion to perform for his teammates, he still dominates the line of scrimmage even though kids are starting to catch up with him in size. Thaddeus wants to remain a member of this football family because that's what it is to him. It's a family to him. He wants to be a part of the team's ups and downs during seventh and eighth grade. He wants to join them in the trials and tribulations that you have in the course of a football season. He wants to continue and to develop as a Cougar football player. And he wants to help his team and our community win a championship. That's his dreams. That's his desires. As a parent, I have an obligation and a long-term vision for what I think is important to Thaddeus. And that starts with education. Early on, Anna and I recognized that Thaddeus has just an outstanding, exceptional academic potential. To help him nourish and develop that, from preschool through fifth grade, we put him in the Montessori school that was up here. And he thrived and he flourished. Last year, they no longer had the grades for him at the Montessori school. We started him at the Sholo Advanced Placement School. We were excited with Dr. Brackney had started. But it wasn't quite what we anticipated because there's only three boys in the sixth grade class. Those other two had no interest in what Thaddeus had interest in. That very first recess, he went to play basketball with the fifth graders, kids his age. Teacher told him, "No, you can't. You're too big. You're gonna hurt the other kids." So he's isolated in his classroom for recesses and lunches. And more importantly to him, he felt socially isolated. So we took him out and we rolled him in St. Anthony's Catholic School. And he thrived there. The teachers have seen what we've seen and recognize his academic potential. With that small 12-person class size that Felicity talked about, they're able to give him some individual time to stimulate that inquisitive mind that he has. And my statements about Thaddeus' academic skills are not just the beliefs of a proud parent, but they're backed up by his standardized scores. At St. Anthony's last semester, the spring, they took the Iowa standardized test. His composite score as a sixth grader was 12th grade, nine months. He maxed out off the charts for math, science, and social studies. And unfortunately for Thaddeus, he inherited my English skills and only scored grade-appropriate sixth grade, nine months, that brought his composite down. But we want to make sure we feed that. And he's found a place with the teachers that are stimulating him. I'm sure he could get some stimulation at the junior high, but we know we have it at St. Anthony's right now. I've talked to a couple of you and I understand that others in the community, like David Tanny and some of Thaddeus' coaches, have talked to you about allowing Thaddeus and the Cantor boy to play youth football. I've heard your reasons for opposing it. I listened to your meeting on April. I wish we had known about it so we could have been here then. But I'd like to express to you some of the reasons I think you should change your policy. I recognize that allowing private school students to play sports at your school is an option. As my wife Anna said, Blue Ridge has chosen the option that they live in their district to allow them to play. The state mandates you to allow homeschool kids to participate and try out for the team, which I understand through my conversations. Some of you disagree with that statutory requirement. But let's look at why Arizona and many of the other states have put that into law or otherwise allow homeschool kids to play. First, it's the legal constitutional reasons why that is in place statutorily. First, denying a non-public school student access to public school programs, not offer them otherwise, denies them their due process property right in the free public education provided by our state statute and under the federal statutes, the Fourteenth Amendment in particular. Two, non-public school students excluded from part-time activities are unjustly discriminated against, denying these students their right to equal protection under the law. Again, a Fourteenth Amendment argument under the federal constitution and also there's equal protection on the Arizona state constitution. Third, for those students attending a religious private school because of a sincerely held religious belief, the right to the free exercise of the religious belief is burdened by a prohibition against access to public school activities. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution and also protected in our state constitution. These are the legal reasons that states have started allowing homeschool kids to participate in public school extracurricular activities. The private schools haven't pushed on these same issues because most private schools are in urban suburban areas where they're large enough with enough revenue that they have their own sports. We see it because our schools compete against them. And they see it more in St. John's and that lower level because most of them have the populations that go down there. But in a rural public school like we have here with St. Anthony's and White Mountain Montessori, we're small. We struggle. We don't have those sports activities. And like the homeschoolers, the same reasons. And that is why the private schools here are requesting you to reconsider your policy and to treat the private school kids who don't have those options, don't have those opportunities under some of these legal theories, the opportunity to try out. There is also an equity argument. You know, private schools are members, and families are members of the community and pay the same taxes as anybody else in the community, except they choose not to send their children to the public schools that they help to support monetarily. The private schools receive no state tax monies that would otherwise go to the public schools. Yeah, you get a few extra dollars if my son enrolled in your school, but you're still getting my property taxes that go to do it. But by him not attending, we're not truly taking money out of your coffers to help support your education. I've heard some arguments that since my family chooses to send our sons at this time to a private school, that we're giving up our right to receive any benefits from the public school. Using that logic though, the families who hire security firms like Quarter Security to go monitor their homes to make sure that they're safe, should they be giving up their right to have the Sholo Police Department respond? They're using a private enterprise to help provide services and protection that the city otherwise provides. How about the library? I buy books from Amazon, but the Sholo Public Library just right next door receives part of their funding depending on how many books they lend out. Should now I be denied the ability to go check out a book because I hurt their funding level when I buy a book off of Amazon or from a bookstore? I think if we really look down into these arguments, that we see that this private school giving up the rights to participate in the public schools has the same fallacies to it as the Sholo Police and the library. Playing football is not only important to Thaddeus, it's important to his mom and I, but for different reasons than him. As the district was going for its school override this last fall, I had a chance to hear Dr. Brackney talking about athletics and why it's important to the school. I remember him talking about athletics being a vital part of the educational process. How when a student participates in athletics, he's more likely to graduate. He's more likely to do well in school and he's much less likely to get into drugs and alcohol. That's the reasons we encourage Thaddeus to play. We want him to play. And I think you all agree with why athletics are important. And we want that chance for Thaddeus for seventh and eighth, before he joins your school in ninth grade, to remain a part of his football family, to continue to grow and develop on the football field, not only as a player, but as a young man. If you allow Thaddeus to play football next year for the seventh grade, you will be proud of how he represents not only your school, but our community, not only on the football field, but off the football field. So I hope you'll reconsider your position on not allowing private school kids participate in playing football for the Sholo Junior High School.
As stated, comments from the board can't be directed to the audience at this time. And so, without showing disrespect, we do have to move forward and I hope you understand that.
Without disrespect, we're gonna go to my youngest son's Little League game.
There you go. Please, enjoy.
Can I go?
Go ahead.
I didn't fill a form. It's Cal's birthday and we already did it.
You get two minutes.
Happy birthday, Cal. My name is Dave Fawcett. And most of you know me pretty well. I've been involved in school programs for a lot of years. Been involved in the youth programs for a lot of years. I love these young men over here. It meant so much to Cal. It became on his birthday. So we're here. So, sorry for being emotional. I'm here to speak for these young men. I would like to see them have opportunity to play football for Sholo. I'd like to see them have a chance to play football for Sholo. I'd like to see them have opportunities to participate in extracurricular activities that are involved in Sholo. I think Sholo is one of the greatest school programs around. I chose to move here. I chose to keep my kids here. I've had many opportunities to move my kids to Blue Ridge or to the place up north, and I refuse to because the people here are good, the good. The school board members are great. The faculty and staff at Sholo has been fantastic for my kids. I've had two graduate, I have three currently attending. Cal will be in the seventh grade next year. I understand the funding, and there's so much more to school, running a school, than we as laypeople understand. You guys know a lot more about it. And so I do understand that there are financial obligations and financial things you look at. I ask you to look to the future. These young men who are now attending St. Anthony's, they're going to have an opportunity to choose which high school they go to. Blue Ridge will accept them. I hate to see us lose people and money and good athletes and good students to Blue Ridge because they can't attend and participate in our school activities. Many of the homeschools, if you have looked around, many of the homeschools now are chartered, and they are taking money from the state. They are chartered. And yet, they are still allowed to participate in our activities because it's called homeschool. So I ask you, please revisit this. Please put this on your agenda for a future meeting. Please talk about it, read the material, and consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just don't want to bug you.
Hey.
First thing, happy birthday to Cal.
Item 1.4. Teacher Board Agenda Items.
Thank you for your time.
Item 2.1, Approval of District Teacher Evaluation System Handbook. Mr. Brackney.
Thank you, sir. In your packet is a new, I can't say new because basically the evaluation system is the same. There are some modifications that, as an administrative team, we've gone through. We've not only worked with Ms. West as the curriculum director, but we had a staff team that also has gone through this, teachers that have looked through it and made the changes. There are minor changes, and Stephanie, do you mind sharing them real quick with the
A lot of these changes are minor. There's several, there's two major ones, though. If you look on page four of your handbook, now, these changes came about because of the House Bill 2500. So we've had the Senate Bill 1040, which put this in place, and then the House Bill 2826, which added a bunch of stipulations, and then House Bill 2500 added these revisions. So if you notice on page four at the top, there's a probationary teacher now and a continuing teacher. We used to have those several years ago, and then the laws changed with the tenure laws, and they took it out. Well, the teachers kind of got all together and says that's unconstitutional, there needs to be a probationary time and a continuing time. So this is what it is. So if you notice, a probationary teacher is three or less consecutive years in our district. They are probationary. Basically, there's different things that we do with them, of course, and a brand-new teacher. Now, if they, if any teacher in the district that has been with us more than three years goes to that developing or ineffective, those bottom two runs in the evaluation, they are put on probation. And if you see in that third paragraph down, it says there would be grounds for dismissal for any certified teacher that stays in those bottom two categories on the teacher evaluation for more than two years, then we will dismiss them. And then the continuing teacher is basically whoever's been there for more than three years and is not ever in that bottom run. And then there's a few small ones again, and then if you'll turn to page 24, there is some changes with the student achievement. If you look at standard eight, score standard eight, this is achievement assessment number one, there's two categories of teachers. There's the group A teachers, which are core teachers. There are the math, the English, the social studies, the science teachers. That is group A. Group B is all your electives and your CTE teachers, PE and those. So when you see group A and group B, that's what it means. So in group, in standard eight, for the first assessment, there is a growth score now, a growth scale. So if you notice in there, if they exceed the growth, it's 10 points. This is per teacher and all their kids. So if their kids exceed the growth, they get their full 10 points. If they maintain growth, then it's six points, and if they do not maintain growth, it's two points.
When you're talking about growth, you're talking about one-year growth?
Yes.
So you all understand that when I, as a fifth-grade teacher, if a child comes to me and I make sure that year they maintain growth, in other words, they grow at least a year, and they learn what they're supposed to, then that's where they get the six points. If they exceed one year in growth, so instead of going from a fifth grader, but they go to fifth grade in one month or fifth grade in six months, or in the case of some kids that go to 12th year, ninth month, then they've really exceeded growth. But that's how that particular terminology fits.
And this is based on the benchmarks, the quarterly benchmarks and the pre-test, post-test through Galileo that we use now. And that's how we judge growth. Galileo has it all built into their system. It's real easy for us to look at, and we can do it from test to test. So like, pre-test to first benchmark, we can see, okay, we're still not growing, we got to step it up. So we can monitor this all year long, you know, and help the teachers get their full points. And if you notice, this portion of the teacher evaluation is 30% of the evaluation. This will change next year to 20%. And then if you go down to the next page is the standard nine, we have to have more than, we have to have at least two assessments for student growth, so it's not just one or the other. These are based off the state mandated tests, and they're working on the laws now to revise this once again, that it will be, the state tests have to be 20% of the teacher evaluations. So the first one, this year, we're good because they're just talking about this right now. We don't know for sure if it's going to go through. And so standard nine is based on state mandated tests, even for group B teachers. So group B, all your electives, they're going to work on the math a little bit more with the teachers. You know, you can do math stuff in a PE class or in a CTE class or any of those. And those are the two big changes. There was a few other things, like 45 calendar days for probationary or for professional development plans, all that kind of stuff. But other than that, that's about the gist of the changes this year. And they're all according to the laws. So do you have any questions for me?
Stephanie, how long does it take to do an evaluation now? There's a lot of stuff here.
There is. In the evaluation system we have now, it's required that the principals do two formal evaluations and four walkthroughs. House Bill 2500 let us change that. There's just one formal evaluation that they write up and two, a minimum of two walkthroughs. Of course, the principals are in there all the time anyway, but just one formal, unless they see a problem with the teacher, the teacher's struggling, and then, of course, they'll go back and help them again. And then you write up your summative with all your data. So that has changed, which is a lot better for the principals. They just, it was too much before. And I don't know, you know, I don't know if the teachers appreciated so many formal ones all the time, too.
But it takes a while.
It does take a while. Absolutely. The formal evaluations is a minimum of 30 minutes. So you have to see a full lesson plan, and that could take up to an hour per teacher.
Yeah.
You know, and poor Farrell, you know, he's got, what, 45, 45 teachers? You know, so it does take a lot of time. It does take a lot of time.
But it's very thorough.
Yes, this is very thorough. The laws are very thorough now. They, you know, there's not much wiggle room anymore. Any other questions?
I have a question. I'm not sure who will answer this, but I'm interested to know how our administrators grade as far as giving these evaluations done.
How are the principals evaluated according to this?
Yeah, how are they doing? Are they getting every teacher every year? Are they?
They are.
Are we getting this done?
Yeah, they have to have the scores into me. We had to have them into me so I could turn them into the state by May 15th, and they all had them in. So we have to rank them, that highly effective, effective, developing, or ineffective. And the principals are great this year, they got it all done. But they take a lot of time in these rooms. You know, they're really helping the teachers. Instruction is the top focus throughout the district. It has been for several years now with the principals.
Another question. Who's evaluating the principals? And does that lie within this, or do you have it separate?
The principal's evaluation, those student achievements that you see, are exactly the same. So we then judge the growth for the whole school. So then, in Galileo, I can pull up the whole school's growth, and you can see if they're maintaining or if they're growing. If a majority of their teachers are at the maintain, or at the exceed level, they get their 10 points. So their student achievement rates are exactly the same as what the teachers are doing. So they have to grow their teachers while the teachers grow the kids. So it all comes into play altogether.
And those evaluations are being done?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, because he has his numbers to me also.
Thank you.
Because I have to report all that to the state now.
We didn't used to have to do that, did you?
We didn't. We didn't have to report it. The principals took care of it, but now with the teacher accountability and the laws, we have to report it every year.
That's good.
It is good.
Makes everybody accountable.
Yep. And I have to say, a big majority of our teachers are highly effective. I would say almost all of them. They're really good teachers.
Are you ready to entertain a motion?
You guys can dance if you want to go.
I'll motion we approve the evaluation system handbook.
Second.
Have motion in second. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3.1, Approval of Resignations. Mr. Brackney.
We have a couple of resignations as listed, Anell Bryant, Elizabeth Harper, Cheeky Babala, Jennifer Smith, Robert Rulo, and Bernie Borts. We'd ask that you approve these resignations as listed.
Make a motion we approve these resignations as listed.
Second.
Have motion in second. Any further questions?
Yeah, Mr. Brackney, how come all the preschool teachers are quitting?
I actually have not had a chance to interview them as they've exited. Are there?
I know that Cheeky is moving to the East Coast with her family, with her husband's family. So they're all going in route together as a big group. And Beth had another part-time job that she had along with our job, and anyway, it's turned into a full-time position that she felt she needed to go with.
Okay. I just wondered because, wow.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3.2, Approval of Hiring. Mr. Brackney.
We have a couple of hirings as listed. Elizabeth Clark at the high school, excuse me, junior high fast-forward teacher. Jackie Johnson, a high school art teacher. Laura Hustler, high school special ed teacher. David Clausen as a high school special education teacher. Kevin Curtis as a high school culinary arts teacher. Carnell Griffin, Whipple Ranch teacher assistant. Sally Mooney, Nicholas Homestead teacher assistant. Deanne Cunningham, Whipple Ranch teacher's assistant. Tori Irwin at Nicholas Homestead. Melissa Palmeroy as a teacher at Nicholas Homestead. Ann Ansbot at Linden. And Tammy Keane, grounds summer maintenance worker. We'd ask that you approve these hirings as listed.
It's not Melissa Palmeroy? Doesn't she already work for us?
Well...
I mean, she has for years.
Yes, she has. However, under the circumstances with her certification, she stepped in and helped us out this last year, but because of the certification not matching what she was doing, we had to open that position up. And when another position opened that she qualified for, that's why we're putting her in here now. And yes, we're glad to keep her.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion we approve these hirings.
Second.
We got it covered. Motion in second. I have one question before I move. For all these teacher assistants, are those the ones going to, the special needs kids coming in, or what are they being used for?
They are.
Are they one-on-one aides? Okay.
All right, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3.3, Approval of Stipends and Volunteers. Mr. Brackney.
We have quite a few, so a couple of them I read. As stipends, Missy Goodman as the head volleyball coach at the high school. Bill Hathaway as the head baseball coach for next year. Russ Evans as the high school girls' soccer coach. And Sean Plouffe as the lead health tech stipend. As volunteers, Seth Jane as the boys' high school soccer. And Carter Anderson as a boys' high school soccer. Both of them are volunteers. Also, event workers, David Alexander and Kelly Spencer. As listed, there are the Prop 301, performance calculations, that's the 40% pot, or one of the 40% pots, and the teachers listed there and how they did. Rather than read those, whatnot, I think if you'd like me to, I will. But then on page nine, there's also the approval of the NPC dual enrollment stipends for spring of 2014. Completed are Missy Boucher, Chuck Marsh, Brian Enfield, and Chaz Chappelle. Also a tutor stipend that we get from the state, Dusty Connor, Martha Fitzpatrick, and Krista Marler. We'd ask that you approve these stipends and volunteers as listed.
I'll make a motion that we approve these.
Have motion in second. Any further questions or concerns?
Yeah, I hope that in the future, there's one program here that we've hired somebody that's been there before. I hope we see some new people there in the future. I don't know that I'll approve anybody that hasn't. I don't get some new people here. Having said that, I'm good.
All right, so I have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Approval of Certified and Classified Substitutes.
This is specifically for our summer school program that we're doing right now. Listed there are Chaz Chappelle, Martha Fitzpatrick, Jim Reedhead, Glenda McMillan, Ellie Thomas, Patrick Bergstrand, Jodel Roten, Nikki Musaroff, Brandy Wieland. I've got to chuckle. Ann Hall, Ray Ann Britton, Vicky Sloan, Jamie Ramsey, and Deb Pot. The reason I chuckle is I look at some of these people that we're approving, and I taught them in high school years ago. I guess, well, it wasn't that long. I'm not that old, am I? But it's kind of neat to see them coming up through the ranks and now teaching our kids. They're doing a great job, so we'd recommend that you approve these stipends, or these certified and classified substitutes.
I'll motion approve the certified and classified substitutes as listed.
Have motion in second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 3.5, Approval of Contract Revisions. Mr. Brackney.
We have a few folks that are moving from seven-hour positions to open eight-hour positions. As listed, Kathy Edwards is a transfer to the fast-forward position. Karen Abels also going into fast-forward. Goyleta Morris is going from the librarian to teach PE at Nicholas Homestead. Sean Plouffe was a seven-hour, because of the lead health tech position there, he needs to be eight hours. And Debbie Price, warehouse clerk, to a split position with the warehouse and transportation secretary.
So some of those aides that we just approved, are they to take positions of these people?
Yes.
Some of these.
Some of them.
I'll make a motion that we approve these contract revisions.
Second.
Have motion in second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Item 4.1, Discussion Concerning Policy GCF-RB Professional Staff Hiring. Item 4.1, discussion concerning policy GCF-RB professional staff hiring. Mr. Brackney, do you want to start us on this?
Well, I I can. In your packet is a copy of the policy that we have regarding our hiring, specifically a reemployment of retired or former certified and support staff. I'm kind of open to supporting you and however you want. I can give some background of how things came about with the state approximately 15 years ago. And then Dinah, I believe, was here when the policy was approved about nine and a half, 10 years ago. I would think I was the high school principal at the time when Mr. McKay and Mr. Seaman presented that. And I I think Mr. Seaman did get a chance to call most of you this this week and kind of explain a little bit about it. So I I can do just about whatever you'd like.
Well, I I think at this time, based on what I've heard from different board members, I'd like a breakdown of a little bit about, now guys, before we talked about, just a breakdown of the contracts, how they're, how people are hired on here, and where they're hired on to what, just a little explanation of the policy.
A few years ago, well, about nine and a half years ago, the board adopted a, a, an ESI policy, hiring retired individuals back. A few years before that, the state was running into difficulty with a teacher shortage. And they were trying to find ways to keep teachers kind of involved in the program. So it used to be that when you retired from teaching, you took your your retirement out, and then you went away from teaching completely. Part of the reason was there was a teacher shortage. So the state came up and said, well, i- if you're going to hire back retired individuals, retired in the state retirement system, then they have to sit out for at least a year. And if they'd sat out for at least a year, then you could hire them back if the district so chose. Or if they didn't want to sit out that year, they're, they could be hired under a third-party contractor, kind of a loophole in the law, if you will. Our board at the time had looked at it quite extensively. Other districts were jumping on board and would use that loophole with a contractor such as ESI, Educational Services. And would, the the teacher or staff member would be employed through a third party, not directly with the school. So it met the letter of the law, and they could come back and go to work. We did that initially with our ESI, with our retired staff. We started, I believe, at 80, 85, 80% is what our board approved. We would not pay the insurance, and we did not have to cover the retirement into paying into ASRS. And it was a win-win, we felt, for not only the teacher or the employee, but also the district. And it was. It was pretty good. However, one of the difficulties we ran into was if an individual came and was retired from, say, the military, or intel, or the Department of Defense, and we had one group that we were saying, you have to go through ESI. But another group, we were saying, well, you're retired, but you can get hired on and get full benefits and everything else. So the board changed the policy and said that we'll hire any retiree, but if you're retired from any situation, then we would go ahead and put you on ESI, and that's where you would remain. We were able to, after it was working, we bumped it up to, I believe, 85%. Well, the state kind of changed their policies and started, I guess for lack of a better term, wanting some of the retirement. Because what happens is if you had five people paying into ASRS, and then this retiree taking out their employment, now they only had four people paying into ASRS. And so they wanted their money to keep it solvent. And they decided that they were going to come after districts and say, if you choose to have a retired individual from ASRS, Arizona State Retirement System, in your district, that's fine, but you're going to pay a penalty to reimburse us for that money that we'd be collecting from a new employee. So we changed our 85% down to 75%, and then they added on a few more bills and and a little bit more, so we're now at 73%. So if an individual comes into the district who is a retired individual from anywhere, state retirement, military retirement, we treat them all the same. And basically, we pay them 73% of their base salary. So if I go through the salary policy, if they qualified for, so it's easy on the numbers, $100,000, we'd pay them 73% of that, or 73,000. I just use that number. That's way high. Obviously, our teachers are not making $100,000. But that gives you an idea of of what salary would be paid. And then we contract through ESI. We send the, the ESI sends us a bill, we pay it, and for that employee, and the ESI employees get their check from ESI, not directly from the district. And and so that's, that's how we've managed to to work that. What that did was it allowed our staff, who had worked for years, who qualified for the retirement, to get their retirement and go back to work. And it was a basically a win-win situation. It gave the district the breakage. And I call it breakage because if you have a veteran teacher who retires and and goes away at $50,000, and a new teacher coming in at $30,000, there's about $20,000 worth of savings there. That's breakage. And we could use that money in hiring additional staff, that sort of thing. And and so it was basically a win-win situation. And and that's what it's become today.
How many, how many staff members do we have that are on this?
At one point in time, we had, I believe it was 24 or 25 staff members. And right now, I believe, we'll have eight when Mr. Seaman resigns and moves on, eight or nine.
So why do you think that's getting less?
I I think the state.
When we jumped that far, I mean, from 23 to eight's quite a.
You know, there are some folks like me. I I don't see myself retiring. I I just, I I love work. I love being around kids. I love what I do. I'm going to find a place to work someplace. I I love what I do. I can't see myself retiring. If I've worked for whatever period of time, and I've met the requirements, say I put money into my 403B retirement, when I hit age 59 and a half, I can start withdrawing that money. If I'm forced to retire from the school district, I have some choices. I can go work at Walmart as a greeter. I can leave the state and go work for another school district in New Mexico, California, wherever, and start working on a second retirement. I can go to work for the Department of Defense and and get another retirement. And I will probably do that. So I can enjoy life a little bit there at the end. Right now, we've just had people who are on ESI who have been able to catch up on some bills, do some things, and for whatever reason, you know what? They've decided they've had enough. I I look at Farrell Adams or Kevin Borton here. I have a hard time keeping up with these gentlemen. They've got a few more years left in them, and they're like that good old work mule. They're going to keep running till the day they drop. But some folks have just decided it's time to go and retire, and others have decided we're going to hang on.
Going to do this.
Yeah.
What we love.
It is.
You you mentioned there that it was at 80 or 1% and it went down to 73 because more had to go to the state. Are we have, are we, is that true? We have to turn more to the state?
Well, we 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 send more to Arizona State Retirement System. When when an employee goes on to the retirement, go, and starts taking their retirement, they don't have to put money into the system. Well, normally, in the past, we would hire a new teacher, and that person would be making money or paying money into the retirement system. And and so the state now has said, well, instead of, if you hire a retiree back, they're not paying into the system. So what they're doing is they're saying to school districts, we're going to treat you as if you were hiring somebody else back. And we've had to pay a bigger percentage back to the retirement system.
To the state.
State retirement system, yes.
But really, we don't get the full benefit of the 73%.
We, yeah. It's by the time you put, I I think it's around, I'd have to look. It was around 11 or 12% that the state was wanting. And that's why we went from 85 down to 73. The 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 issue that, you know, you run into is, is you've got people that come to work. And and our policy at now says that when you come back in at ESI, on ESI, we pay you that 73% forever, until you decide to quit. Well, they're doing a job. Our teachers are doing the same job that the person sitting next to them is doing. And the teachers, as you know, this year, we were able to give a 1% pay increase. And we didn't give that 1% pay increase to our ESI staff. And and I think that's, that is a concern that some folks have have expressed. And and I don't know, with the way the state has written the laws and the and the policies that we'd have to follow, the laws we'd have to follow, I it's just, it's it's difficult. I don't know that there's a win-win situation. But I think that's, that's part of the concern in 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 being treated fairly and or whatnot. But anyway, that's, that's the way our board has has done it. I think other districts tried to be very generous and may have got themselves into a a financial difficulty. We've been very conservative, and I think that's the way our board has been. So anyway, tonight was the opportunity to kind of give you a little background of where the ESI program came to be. And then I think that's the concern is as we move forward, are there going to be opportunities for ESI employees to continue to increase their salary, so to speak, like regular employees would? Or are we going to leave them there? I do need to tell you that with respect to ESI, the last couple of years, the state has looked at getting rid of that loophole completely. Which if they did that, our employees would then have to decide, if they're going to stay and work, then they'd have to give up their retirement and then just work for the salary that we approve. And then they would be eligible for the insurance and obviously any, because they'd be full-time employees.
They couldn't pull out the retirement then?
That's the state's, there was a a bill that the state, the legislature looked at this year to eliminate a third-party contract and allowing people to take their their retirement and.
And go back.
And go back to work. They're looking at getting rid of that. It.
Police department.
Yeah. I I think, honestly, in all honesty, I think the Arizona State Retirement System has been very frugal in how they manage their retirement system. I think it's it's self-sustaining, and it's doing a very good job. You look at other retirement systems in the state, and I don't know that they have been as frugal in watching their money as well as our our system has been. And I think we may be getting a little flack or or some concerns and whatnot because of that. But overall, I I think it's, so far, it's proved to be a fairly, a good opportunity. The consideration then is, in the future, are we going to modify our policy to take into consideration those that are on ESI? And if there's a percentage increase for all of the staff and not ESI, or are we going to include them? I I think that's, that's part of the concern and why we are where we are today. But tonight was just a a presentation about the policy, so you could kind of see where it came from, where it's been, and and then in the future, where you may want to go with it.
Well, when we first started this policy, it was definitely win-win for us. Because if we didn't have to pay the insurance, then we saved money on that. And it still is a win-win. I mean, it still is. I mean, they can pull their retirement and and we don't have to do insurance. So it still is a win-win situation.
It's not bad. I think the the challenge is going to be for retired folks that are on ESI. It it's going to be a decision that somebody's going to have to make. Whatever the policy is that you set, you know, obviously, I'll live by it and and whatnot. But that's the consideration. That if in the future you want to bring it up for other, further discussion, then fine. But tonight was a presentation of where it's come from, why we're where we're at today, and and give you that information, and then also what some of the concerns are. I had an individual that came in who is, you know, has a retirement from another, another situation. And I had to treat him as I've done everybody else. I, you know, I don't know if there's a fair situation out there.
Yeah.
Other than to move out of the state and get into another program and and go, which is what we used to do.
Question. Where the individual makes, we we pay 73% if their grandfathered in for, say, a higher amount. The state still takes the same percentage out of the money that we pay to them? So a guy actually that was on 73% would have less money than the guy that was on, say, 80%?
Depending on, yeah, the timing. I mean, it we grandfathered, when we, when we went to the 73, those those staff members that were on the 80 or 85%, wherever they were, they stayed there. We didn't cut them.
No, I understand that. I'll just.
Anybody new coming in is on.
I'm asking what the state takes.
The state takes that same percentage.
So if a person is paid, we we pay 73%, they still get the same percentage, which is even a worse deal for the guy that's getting 73.
Correct.
Now, they're taking that money out of their paycheck, or we as a district paying that 12% penalty, right?
Yes. Right now, any staff member that we have part of the employee-related expenses is, besides the FICA and all that kind of stuff, we also, there's a a match. It's about 10%. The employee takes 10% from their check and sends it to Arizona State Retirement System. And then as a district, we take 10%, we match that money and send it into the retirement system.
Well, we match it.
We match it. Now, if we didn't have that retirement system, we would have that 10% to more than likely go to the employee, and they would have to set up their own retirement system. But right now, by law, we have to be involved in the state retirement system as a public entity.
When did that occur? A year, a year or two ago, or?
That's been there for.
Since the inception of the program?
Pretty much.
They just kept raising the percentages?
Yeah, they have. In my tenure.
Lowering our percentages.
In my tenure here, I think we started out around seven and a, seven and a third percent, and we're up just over 10 right now, what we're paying to Arizona State Retirement System.
Ridiculous.
And the other frustration, the the bigger issue is going to be insurance as it climbs every single year. I don't know how we're going to keep up with that.
That 10 and 10, you're talking ESI employees, not regular employees.
Right.
That's regular employees.
That's regular, right?
Yeah. ESI, we don't have to match that 10%.
That's what the question, that's what the question was, is ESI.
I I miss.
There's no retirement taken out of it.
Let's stay with ESI. I want to just stay with ESI. Because I have the same question. So restate your question, Paul, so we make sure we know what we're.
Well, I I guess my concern, well, not my concern, but for the people that are doing this, is if if a person is on 73%, we pay that 73% to this third-party contractor.
Correct.
And the guy that's on 80% or 85%, we still pay that same amount to that third-party contractor.
Pay that 85%.
Is the percentage that comes out of whatever percentage they're on the same for the lower guys it is for the higher guy?
Yes.
So the lower guy actually takes a bigger chunk of his money. Not bigger chunk, but at the end of the day, he has less money.
Well, it the, it it doesn't work that way. If you got the 85, say, Brian's on 85, I'm on 73. That goes to ESI.
I understand.
And ESI pays that bill.
I understand.
The 12% that we pay for goes to the state retirement. So the 73% that I'm doing, my, my 12% goes to the retirement system, but the district pays that, so it's a little bit less of what we'd have to pay. The 85% that Brian's making would still be 12% of that $85,000. It would go to the state. It would go to the state retirement.
That was my question.
Yes.
So we're paying the twelve percent?
Correct.
And, and the, the ESI employee is paying nothing into retirement since they're already, have, have stopped their retirement payments by virtue of retiring?
Correct.
And, and, and are just receiving their retirement. So basically, the state's just a little bit miffed that someone is drawing retirement and working. And in that, within that system, they're not putting any more money in.
Correct.
So they're getting us for the money.
Right. And if we didn't have this ESI system, then we'd have to hire a new employee. And that employee, our employee, would be paying into it. And so that's why they've upped that percentage to collect their money for the retirement system.
So when, at what point does it not become favorable for us to employ ESI folks?
I think, in, in my understanding and talking with Mike, it's favorable for us. The, it's getting to a point at that seventy-three percent where it is not favorable to the staff member because the, the seventy-three percent is there, but now they have to go out and find their own insurance. If you have an employee, i- if a spouse has some insurance that you can jump on that's fairly reasonable, that's okay. But the problem is now becoming with Obamacare, whatnot. The cost of insurance is skyrocketing and, and instead of paying five or six thousand dollars a year, you're paying nine to twelve thousand. And if you've got to go out and find that kind of insurance and pay that kind of rate, I don't know if the ESI is necessarily advantageous anymore. It's more difficult. So if, for example, you had a, a staff member here that goes on ESI and their spouse is working for us full-time and they can buy insurance through the district, it's okay. But it's getting to that point where the cost of insurance is just too much. So I, I think you're going to, more than one way, see that insurance, ESI, or that ESI program be more and more difficult. Or more and more, it won't be as worthwhile as it has been.
So if they're out one year, the way it used to be, then they can come back and work and pay into the retirement again? Can they pull it out?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Now, if they've sat out for, I, I'm sorry, I may have listened wrong. If they've sat out for a year, they can continue to pull their work, their, their retirement out. And the employee could be hired back by the district full-time and get benefits if the district chose to do that.
Well, isn't that the way it used to be?
Some districts actually did that, but there are very few of them that did that. Most of them, if you talk to ESI now, they're all at seventy to seventy-five percent.
Hey, since, since the state is where the retirement goes, so like, somebody that was in another district, retired, if they came and worked for us and they weren't, we didn't have ESI, then could they pull out their retirement?
If they-
If they were hired and paying in?
For a year.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We could hire that person if it was our policy. We, this policy we have now, I couldn't. If they're getting that retirement from the state or from anywhere else, this is the policy I have to follow. So if another teacher, say, for example, came from another district here and they were retired and pulling out their state retirement, I'd have to hire them through this. Now, if you changed your policy, and, and if they'd sat out a year at least, then you could hire, i- if your policy said that we could hire them straight back, then yeah, we could do that.
Isn't that what we used to do?
No. We, we, that was, Mr. McKay and Mr. Seaman were very adamant about making sure that it stayed a win-win situation. If you were to go back and hire them directly and pay them their full wage, give them the insurance, all the benefits, the only thing the district would be saving is that ten percent. But that's not a big enough breakage between a new employee and a veteran staff.
Got you, got you.
And, and we would end up becoming top-heavy. I- in the construction business, it would be like having everybody as a foreman. And, and, and no newbies, no, no laborers, so to speak. And- I probably cut too much, sir.
Clear?
It's hard to outfigure those who spent their lifetime figuring it.
No kidding. Item five point one, approval of intergovernmental agreement between district and NAVIT for the 2014-15 school year. Since the guy's name that's down here seems to be absent. Kelly, you're doing it, right?
No, Mr. Bratton.
Oh, Mr. Bratton.
I'm okay with that.
Good try.
Every year, we enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the JTED, which is NAVIT. In your packet is the agreement that we have, the Joint Technological Education Courses, all listed in there, or all the courses that we offer. There's really no change from last year. It shows who teaches what, what the prerequisites are. And this is a formality that every year we end up doing this. So we'd ask that you approve this agreement as listed.
I'll make a motion that we approve this. I love NAVIT.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ares. Item five point two, approval of food service prices for the 2014-2015 school year.
I, I will tell you, this is, is, is rather frustrating for me. Federal law says that we have to have our prices at a certain amount, whether we need that pay raise or not, and that's exactly what we're doing here. As list, this, this, the federal government is saying that we should be at around two dollars and thirteen cents. Therefore, I believe that we're looking at, on listed, for, for adult breakfast, that is, so we can round it to the, the ten, ten-cent room. So it'll be, as listed down there, two-ten. Breakfast for kids is listed at one-thirty. For K-five, dollar forty for six through twelve. And then also lunches is there. We are increasing them slightly and we're doing it because we're forced to.
And how much is that? Wasn't it about one-twenty-five or?
Uh, yeah.
I think it was-
Around one-twenty-five. It's, it's going to go up. And we'll try and keep it as minimal as possible and still stay within the law. But this is one of those have-to things.
I'll move that we approve it then.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
You can reluctantly be in favor.
Doesn't matter if they're going to tell us.
I'm not reluctant.
Item five point three, approval of updated bank signatures.
We have one change on our bank signatures, and that is the business manager change. Other than that, all else, all signatures stay the same. So we're changing from Mr. Seaman to Greg Schubert as of July one. So we'd ask that you approve him as a bank signature.
Special move.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five point four, the approval of declaration of Wells Fargo line of credit.
Before we go on, I need to let you know, every year we'll go through this to approve the two-million-dollar line of credit. We have not had to use that line of credit. And I'll be honest with you, it's because of Mr. Seaman. We have come close a few times, and not because of any management problem that we may have had, but the state are, are supposed to send us our payments that are, are due us, but they would miss their payments. And so it put us in a bind. So the state has said that we would have to be responsible to go out to pay those bills and, and that was having this line of credit. It is in place in case there is a problem, but because of Mr. Seaman and his management, we've had the cash in hand and we have not had to tap into this. There was some times when it was very, very close, but we've done a good job. So Mr. Seaman is asking that we, you approve this line of credit that if we ever have to, to make sure we can pay our bills to our staff, then hopefully we'll get the money reimbursed from the state and then pay it back.
Well, that's when we did this, was when the state said, oh, we're going to pay you a month later.
Well, they-
When they were-
Two months.
Having trouble with their budget, yeah.
We, we don't have to pay interest on the line of credit.
Yes, we do.
You do if you borrow money.
What, what is it? You know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It was a very low amount. I want to say around two percent. Thank you, Kelly. That just wasn't the peace sign you were flipping me there. About two percent, and we have to pay that. And then the sad thing is, under law, the state does not have to reimburse us that two percent.
You know, that's a great opportunity. If we borrowed the two million and put it in municipal bonds at five and a half tax-free, we'd be making three and a half percent. Okay, let's- Okay. Anybody want to prove that and we can move forward?
Sure.
I'll prove it.
I'll second.
Further questions to come? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item six point zero, consent agenda. Mr. Bratton.
Thank you, sir. There's just three items. Mr. Seaman is asking you to ratify expense vouchers, ratify the payroll vouchers, and ratify the junior high and the high school activity revenues and expenditures. Those are listed in your packet, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Next month, when Mr. Seaman's not here.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda. Isn't that what it is? Yes.
Second. I have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven point zero, board reports. Mr. Pierce.
I don't have anything profound. We've had a wonderful year. I'm glad to see us moving forward. I regret to see Mike Seaman leave. He's really been a stalwart to the community and to the school. I, I admire him and his ability. I just hope that Greg can come up to that. We'll just find out shortly. And that's a, that's a challenge for all of us.
I'll make sure he does.
Good. Good. And, and we're going to hold you to it. That's, that's a man that, no, the state's going to hold it to it.
You're darn right.
But I don't have much else to say specifically. I have some great concerns, but that's my problem. I'll work with them. That's all I'd have to say. Thank you.
Mr. White?
It is amazing to me how the state keeps taking monies from us, but yet requires more of us. And everyone that we have employed at this school district, I think, steps up and does that, which is profound. I think we're starting to get a, a following of folks around the, the area that, that want to come to our school. Not only for the accelerated, not only for sports, but for everything that, that rounds a person's education. I think we provide a very good chance for them to get that. And I'm proud to be part of that, and that's all I've got.
Mr. Larson?
Just real grateful to be a part of this process. I'm grateful for all the folks that came in today to, to see us and, and grateful to have heard from them. Just want the staff and administration to be safe this summer. Although I wanted to go slow, I'm looking forward to, we're forward to this school year. Just express my gratitude as always.
Senator?
Just thank you for all your work. I know you guys just keep working and working in the summer. You don't get to stop. We don't either, but. Anyway, thank you.
As I wrap it up again, I, I just kind of want to comment on the two boys that presented tonight, that that was, you know, takes a lot of guts to stand up and present your opinion. You know, where that opinion takes us, we don't know. But it was, I just like seeing young people rise to the challenge and be, you know, overcome fears. And, you know, it takes a lot of guts. As the, the mom presented, she, she admitted to the, she presents in front of people all the time and she admitted the fear. So those two young men had to, I'm just proud of them. They're good kids. And as been, as a second witness to all the people that have spoke, you know, whole school district is a great school district, and our staff, our employees, our students, our families. They're a great collection of people and they're fun to associate with, to be around. I wish all our kids the best of efforts as they take care of themselves in the summer and prepare for the next school year. And I ask all our teachers to do as much recharging as they possibly can to prepare for the next round of duties that will be thrust upon them. With that, I will bring this meeting to a close. Thank everybody for watching us, those in attendance, both here and in, on TV. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.